Okay, we will call to order the meeting of the Batavia City Council on Tuesday, September 4th, 2018. I'd ask that you please rise for brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight is, we enter what is traditionally the start of the fall season with the coming of the Labor Day holiday. I am struck by the fact that Batavia has experienced a number of tragedies recently involving our residents, and some of them of which we certainly don't want to spend a lot of time talking about, but we just certainly want to acknowledge the sentiments of our community in support of families who are dealing with difficult situations, deaths, and other mental illnesses and tragedies of a variety of circumstances. I want to specifically name out the members of our police and fire departments who have in many instances in the last several weeks have been called to some very tragic situations, and in my opinion, they have handled it in extraordinarily appropriate manners and shown outstanding professionalism in dealing with some very difficult moments. So, I just want to be thankful for the good services that the city of Batavia has ever offered, but I most importantly want to send a special blessing out to all those from our community who are dealing with difficult moments in their life. Tonight, as always, we want to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon all those men and women and all those from throughout our nation who are serving with them. As always, we ask for direction and guidance and understanding and vision as we act on the items before the city council, and we ask that Batavia continue to be showered upon with favor for the many greatnesses and goodnesses and improvements that we've experienced as a community over this last many years. We ask for all these blessings, amen.
Amen.
Alderman Rosado, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, the city clerk, the police call the roll.
Brown.
Here.
Rosado.
Here.
Atek.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Jansett.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Salvati.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Meitzler.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
McFadden.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all fourteen members of the city council are present and accounted for, the summer season is over. So, nice to have everybody back, thank you. Moving then to items number four, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda. Alderman, Atek is the governmental services chairman, do you have anything?
Not officially. Is there anything?
I think we got...
Yes.
Okay.
Item number eight, ordinance 1857, just to postpone it in two weeks to the next city council. Yeah, there were some questions that we had at the call meeting that we want to make sure we get clarity on, because they directly impact passing this and then what we'll do after that.
All right, anything else? All right, I move that we approve the agenda as removing number eight.
Any further discussion on that?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. I just would suggest that maybe at the next call meeting, maybe we discuss this briefly, so that there be a understanding before we come to the next meeting and everybody's asked to vote on it as to what ideas or changes or alterations we're proposing.
There's a few amendments that we wanted to make to the community commercial classification, and I think before we do that, we wanted to try to have the one or two things, or three or whatever it is, that we want to change named when we go to do this.
Okay. I would encourage us, if we can, to maybe chit chat with Scott and staff and everybody so that maybe they can be thinking about it, or bring some other folks in for the conversation or whatever.
We want to make sure we got it right with them.
Right, right, so let's make sure we're... Alderman Callahan?
Yeah, and a lot of them aren't anything that are already known, it's just to listen to a few more people about some, to get some input and stakeholders.
That's fine. Anybody else on changes?
So, your honor?
Alderman Brown?
Just to be clear, that will be on the next call agenda, then?
I would hope it would be.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and second for the approval of the agenda minus item number eight, which has been postponed. Kirk, call the roll.
Atek.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Jansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye. Motion's approved, fourteen yes, no no's, none absent. Okay, moving to five, the consent agenda. Alderman Atek, please.
The consent agenda reads as follows: Accept and place on file committee of the whole minutes for August 14th, 2018. Approvals: August 24th, 2018, payroll in the amount of $839,654.98. Accounts payable check register in the amount of $1,465,393.40. City council minutes for August 20th, 2018. Approval for a Class D1 liquor license for Olvera Food Incorporated doing businesses El Taco Grande at 4-6 North River Street. Approval for a Class D1 liquor license for Krabby Boil at 220 North Randall Road. Resolution 18-102 approving a plat of easement and abrogation for Lot 1 of Lot 87 and 88, Batavia Business Park re-subdivision. Ordinance 18-58 amending the official zoning map of the city of Batavia for 1900 Hubbard Avenue, City of Batavia applicant. Ordinance 18-56 amending the official zoning map of the city of Batavia for 620, 625, 629, 639, and 646, South Van Van Buren Street. 3 Tomani, 322, 328, 336, 344, 428, 435, 451, and 511 Pine Street. The Burlington Northern Railroad and adjacent rights away, right-of-way for the City of Batavia applicant. Ordinance 18-59 amending the text of the zoning code, City of Batavia applicant. Ordinance 18-54 declaring surplus property and authorizing the sale of property. And resolution 18-103-R authorizing a change order number six with Williams Brothers Construction for the Phase 1 wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation project.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Second?
Move, Alderman Atek, second vote, and Stark for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Atek.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Jansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye. Motion's approved, fourteen yes, no no's, none absent. I might want to just take a moment here, Mr. Olvera is in the audience, and he's the new owner of El Taco Grande. Could you, would you want to come up and tell us a little bit about yourself and what you're planning to do over there, because you obviously are following in the footsteps of some legendary Batavia business people?
Hi, how are you? Yeah, my name is Jose Olvera. I am going to take over September 16th, El Taco Grande, and I tried to do, maybe like party around like 3 o'clock, everybody's invited. From the people I know, from the city and from other people, I'm going to give you 50% discount, like between 3 to 6 o'clock, and you want to go there, everybody's invited. I tried to make like little party with Mariachi Ban, but I can't find anybody, because it's September 16th, it's independent from Mexico, and everybody is booking for the last six months. It's too late for me, anyways. I tried to sing, it's not my, I can try something. And now, like, we, I told you before, I got to try to do things better, put some special dishes and the, from the food from the Taco Grande, do the same service, the best we can do it. I have a new servers, I tried to hire more people to be in the front desk from the restaurant. And my goal is be more friendly from the restaurant, like, try to open for breakfast, maybe in like two months, yeah, I'm working on it, to open for a Mexican breakfast. And I get now my PO system to do the things better for the server, for the customer, and for the, for the business. Yeah, that's my, my goal, yeah, I'm working too hard.
Yeah, I just want to offer here that Mr. Olvera met with myself and the Police Department Administration when this was all being kind of put together, and he certainly did have a lot of nice ideas and very enthusiastic, and, you know, it was very easy to transfer the license from him, from the Martinez family to him, and the Martinez's are kind of still in the background here, I'm not sure they'll ever really, they're going to be working for you instead of you working for them.
No, he don't, he don't want to do anything. The first thing, I was talking with him yesterday.
Okay.
And I told him, I told you about the, after September 16th, I don't, I don't go to call you anymore.
Okay.
Okay, don't call me for nothing.
Right, right. Well, I just want to say that we're getting a veteran here, he's been, how many years have you worked there?
Seventeen years.
Yeah, so he knows the business, he knows many, most of the customers, much of the clientele, and as he's already indicated to me, and which he also just indicated to you, he's, he's got some ideas for things he thinks can enhance the business over there a little bit, and I'm kind of excited about him coming in and helping out and doing some stuff and becoming a bigger part of Batavia. So, we welcome you with open arms and wish you the very best in many years of business, success and growth in our town.
Yeah, thank you so much, thank you for your help, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move to item number six, which are matters from the public for items not on the agenda, and I think Jan Wright is here, and Laura, do you want to make some comment, too, or?
I'm Jan, and I'm...
Okay.
Good evening, I am Jan Wright, I am the current chair of the Batavia Foundation for Educational Excellence, and I am on the steering committee for Bulldogs Unleashed. And it's a sad day today for Bulldogs Unleashed, because all the dogs were taken off the street. We have been so overwhelmed with the reception that our dogs have gotten on the streets of Batavia this summer, it has been really great. We had thirty dogs, fifteen of which were bought outright by businesses, and fifteen that will be auctioned at our auction event on September 15th. So, I am here today to personally invite all of you to attend our celebration, our Bulldogs Unleashed celebration, which will be September 15th at 6:00 PM at the Eastside Community Center, and we will be having local food vendors, Team Fig will be there, Freddy's, Enticing Cuisine, and a place out of, out of Chicago called Auntie V's Cupcakes. We will be having beer and wine and specialty drinks, and all for the low, low price of $65 per person. The dogs will all be present, and we will be auctioning off the fifteen dogs, but we will also be raffling the ten dogs, the smaller seventeen-inch dogs that have been in the windows of businesses around Batavia. And so, you are still able to purchase raffle tickets if you wish, you can purchase them online, or you can purchase them at the event. So, tickets for the event and raffle tickets are available online, bulldogsunleashed.org/auction-event. So, please do, do join us, because it's going to be a fun night to celebrate the culmination of this huge project. In a related matter, the NBC Sports has started to highlight our Bulldog football team this year. They will, they are, you know, coming out and doing some features on them, and every Friday night at 11:00 PM on the sports channel of NBC Sports, they will show a clip. And they did a clip this summer, we videotaped some information about Bulldogs Unleashed, and so it was really great that they were able to incorporate Bulldogs Unleashed in with this. And so, Laura's going to help me, and we're going to show you the video that was posted this past Friday about that.
...which they play have been intertwined for over a hundred years. Batavia fans have cheered on the Bulldogs to a pair of state championships in just the last five seasons. But head coach Dennis Piran wanted to give back to the community with more than just trophies and parades down Wilson Street. This summer, the Bulldogs did just that, finding a way to contribute with both the bark and the bite. The city of Batavia might be the best of all worlds, a bustling suburb with a small-town atmosphere. Chicago's city life may be a short drive to the east, but peace and serenity is a short boat ride away on the Fox River. And while Batavia has always been known for this kind of Bulldog, this summer, Batavia was taken over by these Bulldogs. Batavia Football teamed up with Bulldogs Unleashed, a project that will provide financial resources to various community foundations within the city. Coach Dennis Piran's team has traditionally raised funds at the Batavia Geneva Football Game. This year, they had a special mission: Support Batavia's Chip-In Foundation, and also support Bulldogs Unleashed.
At the game, we have, in recent years, developed a T-shirt to promote the rivalry, and then sell the shirt, and the funds of the proceeds from the shirt sales, we would use to support a local cause. And so, we raised enough money at the Batavia Geneva Game, really in big part to our, a group of students within our program who really helped support it. We made about eight, nine thousand dollars profit, of which that went to those two organizations, and we get this dog that'll be ours one day as part of that, so, pretty exciting, and eventually be out, hopefully out front of our stadium for everybody to see.
Anytime we're against Geneva, everyone's involved, people like to compete, they love the rivalry, so, especially student athletes, everyone comes together, everyone doesn't have a second thought about supporting a cause.
I teamed up with the Parks and the Library Foundations to revamp this project. We did it back in 2011, and it was quite successful for all three organizations. We raised over seventy-five thousand dollars, which we split equally, so we're hoping to do that again this year.
And just as the Batavia Bulldogs are getting ready for a rugged conference schedule, the Unleashed Bulldogs are also getting ready for the spotlight.
They'll be up through Labor Day, so from now through Labor Day, they'll be on the streets, then our committee takes them off the streets, we want to make sure that they're in perfect condition for the auction. We'll go through a dog wash, and they'll get manicured, and so that when we put them up for auction on September 15th, that they're ready to go, because they're philanthropy dogs. They're raising money for three charities, the Batavia Parks Foundation, the Library Foundation, and the School Foundation, so we want them in tip-top shape.
But this project is more than just an auction, it's about Batavia pride.
I've lived in Batavia twenty years, and, you know, have long affiliations with the city, and this is the way we do things here in Batavia, it's very collaborative, and people, one group inspires another and challenges another. And when Dennis called me and said, you know, "Hey, would you like to do this?", I considered it an honor.
Everybody's got their own special relationship with the Bulldogs, but because it's like the icon, we only have one high school, so we can, we don't have to worry about two mascots, we've got one mascot that really unifies us, a Bulldog.
And for more information on Bulldogs Unleashed, or how you can get involved in the auction, check out bulldogsunleashed.org. The Bulldogs are on display throughout the weekend, and the auction is in Batavia on Sep... So, let's get to our viewers.
One more time, September 15th.
Well, number one, we thank you for coming. Alderman Brown, you want to make some comments?
I just, Jan, for those who don't know, I, we, the video talked a little bit about the different foundations, the different organizations and everything, but all the monies that is raised for what you're doing here tonight, and whether it's through the auction, or whether it's through buying a ticket, it's all tax deductible, correct?
Yes, it is.
Because you are a 501(c)(3), so, for some people, that means an awful lot, so I just want to point that out.
Well, thank you for mentioning that.
So, one thing I do want to share with the council is, is that the coming Batavia Geneva Football Game will be the one-hundredth contest of the two teams in actual play with each other for standings, and so it is a special moment. As a result of that, the high school contacted me and asked if we could help them do something that would be somewhat special on that night, so with the help of Public Works and the Street Department and Gary Holmes' crews, we were able to put together two special street signs. You know, we've had, we got some up already that say that last year, the Batavia High School Football Team was the 7A state champion. So, we've taken those signs, and because we had to put them on the city streets and on state highways, there's conformity colors that you have to have when you use public signs. So, we deviated from that for the signs we've made for the high school, and we've made those in Batavia High School colors. And so, at the beginning, I talked with Coach Piran over the past weekend, at the beginning of the Batavia Geneva Football Game on that night, we're going to present the signs, the new signs, to the Batavia High School Football Team, and then the idea, I think, is they're going to put one on the Wilson Street side and one on the Main Street side of the field, so everybody driving by the field can see that we are the reigning state champions in 7A. And so, I know that the two superintendents of schools in Batavia and Geneva are going to have some kind of a, of a bet on the game, and so Coach Piran asked me if I would contact Mayor Burns in Geneva and see if we can do something that would be somewhat commemorative, and I think I've come up with an idea. I haven't had a chance to talk to the mayor yet, so I don't want to announce what it is I think we're going to do, but it'll be something that people will be able to see and understand, and where the, the winning team will get some special recognition on that night. So, I coached the, I questioned the coach as to, are we sure we're going to win the game? He's thinking pretty highly that he's got a good chance of doing it. Of course, you never know, I should ask our resident expert.
Yes, yes, the word is yes.
Okay. So, if any of you have not watched, Alderman Wolf has a second career in his life as a sportscaster, and I watched him for the last couple of weeks, I was out in, out of town a week ago, and I watched it there, out in Pennsylvania, and I, I watched them again this past weekend, and they do, I think, better than sometimes the stuff you see on the formal TVs with the guys that are supposedly doing this for a career, but the two, he and his partner, Mr. Lundberg, have a real talent and have certainly built up a wealth of knowledge of the fields and the teams and all the players, and they can broadcast a game and, with information likes, top of the drawer, as far as I'm concerned. So, we've got a really stellar program here, and I was recently at a Metropolitan Mayor's meeting, and I probably had four or five of our, my counterparts in Chicagoland say to me, "Well, how did, what's the secret to getting that winning football program you got out there? Everybody's talking about it in all, out in the south suburbs and all these other places." So, we really do have something going here with this, so I appreciate all the good press and publications and everything that this program, and certainly with what your group is doing to kind of highlight Batavia. It spins us in a real positive direction and gives us a lot to pat ourselves on the back about and be proud of. I was telling Jan before the meeting started that, as most of you know, one of my high school classmates was Ken Anderson, who was the quarterback in the 1982 Super Bowl, and he was an Augustana graduate, and he was here in, for the Bulldog golf outing, that's why he was here, and so I got to chat with him several times during that, and so, after he goes back to, he lives in Hilton Head, South Carolina now, he calls me up one day, and he says, "Hey, I need a favor", he says, "I walked out all those Bulldogs in downtown Batavia, and I was overwhelmingly impressed by that", and he says, "Can you give me the name of somebody in Batavia I could call and kind of get the inside scoop on how that was all done?". So, I got a hold of, got Britten Steve McKenna's phone number, and I called Ken back and gave him the number, and he said that his plan was, he was going to call them and get some information, and then he has some relationship down in Hilton Head with the Chamber of Commerce there, and he was going to suggest to them that they do a similar program, only using Dolphins, and setting them around in Hilton Head. So, I don't know where that's going, but that's what we helped start right here in Batavia, if they get it off in Hilton Head. So, this thing just has revelations that go literally nationwide here with this, so I appreciate that. This NBC thing is going to go on, I believe, all season.
All season, follows the team for the season.
So, we're going to, and it's on Friday nights at 11 o'clock?
Yes.
On CNBC, is that what it's?
NBC Sports, whatever the sports channel is on Comcast?
Yeah, there's, there's links to it, both on the, like, the Batavia Football Page, it's on Facebook, there's all links on that, Twitter, if you follow any of the other things.
Steel Comcast Sports.
Yeah, I, it would be nice if we could get, I'd like to get that in the next Neighbor's Magazine, you know, a special thing that talks about it. This past weekend, on Friday, we had an older gentleman down here in the lobby, and he was all excited, because he couldn't find a Batavia High School football schedule, and he thought we'd have one for sure posted in the city hall. So, I talked to Coach Piran over the weekend, and I said, "Can you get me a printed football schedule?". So, if you go out here now, they're out in the compartment.
BATV has magnets with the schedule on it.
Well, whatever, this guy said, he wanted to know when the games were going to be in town, because he wanted to go out to them, and all this good stuff, so, you know, we're doing our part here, hopefully to kind of booster this along, but this really has rave reviews of this program all summer, you know, despite all the adversity of weather that we've had to deal with, almost every event that we've done this year, the Bulldogs have been the real shining star of the whole thing, as far as people down here walking around, and I, I've dealt with countless comments, all very favorable, about what a neat program this is, and many of them are coming from non-Batavia residents who speak with a degree of envy in their voice, that, gee, I wish my town could do something like this. So, it makes you proud to be a Batavian, so thank you for all you guys have done.
Thank you.
Your honor?
Yes?
When you contact Mayor Burns, make sure that he has to deliver whatever the...
Oh, yeah, it'll be a reciprocal thing.
Good, okay, good. It looks good delivering pizza.
To the council?
Mm-hmm, did that last time.
I was thinking of something a little bit different, but...
That's, that's fine, you pick it this...
Pizza's pizza, I gotta have something more meaningful.
Okay.
So, all right, anything else?
Nope, just the next agenda item.
Okay, do we have anybody else that wants to speak to the council?
Your honor, I do have one thing. Several months ago, we passed a proclamation, I'd just like to read that again, since it is September, and I'd like to bring that back up, fitting in with what the mayor said to start the meeting off tonight. Whereas September is known around the United States as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and is intended to help promote awareness surrounding each of the suicide prevention resources available to us in our community. The simple goal is to learn how to help those around us, and to learn how to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, background, and whereas, according to the CDC, each year more than 41,000 people die by suicide. Whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death among adults in the US, and the second leading cause of death among people aged 10 to 24. And whereas Batavia, Illinois is no different than any other community in the country, but chooses to publicly state and place our full support behind local educators, mental health professionals, athletic coaches, PAC leaders, police officers, and parents, as partners in supporting our community and simply being available to one another. And whereas local organizations like Suicide Prevention Services, and national organizations like the National Alliance of Mental Illness, NAMI, are on the front lines of the battle that still, people still refuse to discuss in public, that suicide and mental illness remain too taboo, a topic to speak out on, and whereas every member of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles. And whereas I encourage all residents to take time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors over the next few weeks, to genuinely convey their appreciation for the existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. A simple phone call, a message, a handshake, or a hug can go a long way towards helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the city of Batavia, Illinois, do hereby proclaim September 2018 as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Batavia, Illinois. Just wanted to remind everybody of that, because it is, as the mayor mentioned earlier, something that happens much too often, even in our community and at every level. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your honor, I was going to wait till the end, but I'm going to piggyback on what Alan just mentioned, because we did pass this proclamation back in June, and this is something
And when I say "our children," I truly mean in Batavia, families, friends, neighbors that we know, that we have personally interacted with, that we have been involved with. It's a month to share stories, resources, to shed light, as Matt Allen said, on this taboo topic, and to raise awareness. And this proclamation is not just a feel-good lip service. So, tonight, for a brief minute, I'm going to share a story. I'm going to share a story of a son to good parents, a boy scout deep in the ranks and merits, who is an active athlete and a loyal friend. And by the over 300 people that are still right now wrapped around his visitation, I would say he was well-loved. And my son is not the only one who knows that that is true. If you know someone who is contemplating, if you know that you yourself are having these thoughts, stop your impulse. Talk to someone. Talk to a friend. Talk to a brother, a sister, a cousin, a relative, a parent, it doesn't matter. Talk to someone. If you don't have someone nearby, and that's why you're suffering, there are numbers and people and resources available, churches, spsamerica.org, they're right down the street. They are here in Batavia, right off of Batavia Avenue, 1-800-SUICIDE. Call them, please. If you yourself have experienced the loss of someone to suicide and are finding yourself drowning in the sorrow and anger and frustration or guilt or any other emotion that accompanies it, there are also resources for you, survivors of suicide. Reach out, there's local chapters. Please, we need to talk about this so that it can stop.
Anybody else? So, I don't want to just thank Alderman Metzler and Alderman Wolf for bringing this up tonight. As most of you know, I have a tendency to get my nose into a lot of stuff that the city gets involved in. And I will tell you that for certainly the last week, but for the last eight weeks, we have had just one bad situation after another involving potential suicides. People, some of them are successful, some of them weren't. But our police and fire department has responded heart and soul, and every time this happens, the guys and the gals involved take a real psychological hit themselves just by being there and trying to deal with it and dealing with the families and whatever have you. And I got involved with a couple of these things. Certainly, it's not for my role to go charging in, but I got involved with a couple of situations. And I'm saying a couple, there's been multiples here. And unfortunately, it's a sad commentary. And what Alderman Metzler just said about the need for people to reach out and get some counseling and guidance, it's there. And, you know, it's kind of ironic that this is happening in our town. And down there in, I guess it's the 600 block of South Batavia Avenue, the Suicide Prevention Hotline is sitting there going for somebody just all they need to do. And that, those calls come in from a wide area to that facility down there. But, you know, right here where we got the facility, we're having a problem. And there doesn't seem to be any one particular rhyme or reason as to why this is happening. Every one of these has its own little situation going on with it, and it's a real difficult thing to deal with, and it's a real bad thing for everybody that gets called in to deal with it. So, I just want to publicly go on record as expressing our sympathy and sentiments to the families and the loved ones of everybody that's involved here. And as the mayor, I want to say a big thank you for really a memorable job that's been done by our police, our firemen, our chaplains, the ministerial association in town that's shown up with us if we called them, because this has been, you know, one of those things where you don't know really what you can really do at the moment. And some of these have been very, very difficult situations to deal with. And, you know, anybody that wants to argue that, you know, we have enough policemen in this town or firemen or whatever have you, those men and women are worth every cent that we're spending on them for not only this, but for everything else that we're doing. But when you get dragged into something like this or called to something like this, this really does put your feet into the fire and lets you have to respond in some very difficult moments and a wide variety of circumstances. And from everything I can see, the men and women of the Batavia Police and Fire Department have really risen to the occasion and done everything they possibly could do with the circumstances that confronted them. So, I just want to publicly state that I'm very proud, I don't know if that's the word for it, very proud of the job they've tried to do in some very difficult moments, because we certainly have been challenged here recently with what's been going on here. And so, you know, I guess you can't sweep it all under the carpet, you have to bring it out. And I really thank Alderman Metzler and Wolf for bringing this to the forefront and bringing it on the table and allowing us to reflect on it for a few minutes about what Batavia is facing and what other towns around us are facing, because this is a very trying situation. And hopefully, the world will somehow rise to the occasion and will begin to see this and respond in a more favorable nature with this whole situation. But this is a problem certainly much, much bigger than Batavia, but one that has really hit home in our town to our hearts and souls. And so, I'm really troubled by it. But again, I'm, I've been very pleased by the response that our people have stepped up and done when they've been called to deal with this. So, if you see one of our policemen or firemen, please tell him or her how pleased you are to hear what nice things, and not the word "nice" is not, how admirable they have performed in this whole situation during the multiples that they've been called in on here. So, thank you. All right, next thing is a report from the Batavia Chamber of Commerce. We have the executive director, Ms. Holly, here.
Thank you, Mayor. It's tough to follow. It's been a very difficult time in Batavia with the loss of some friends of ours as well. So, on a positive note, we still have a lot going on at the Batavia Chamber of Commerce. I have two full pages here, so I'll try to go quickly. On September 6th at 4:00 p.m., we will be celebrating the 7th anniversary of Gammon Coach House, so we'll be doing a ribbon cutting for them at 4:00 p.m. On September 7th at noon, we will be hosting a ribbon cutting for Six Plus Cypress, and the owner is here to speak with you here shortly. On September 11th at 9:00 a.m., we've teamed up with the St. Charles Chamber of Commerce to present cybersecurity, and that will be hosted at Pheasant Run. On September 12th, we have our morning networking event at 7:30 a.m. called BC Squared. On September 12th in the evening at 5:00 p.m., our Batavia Women and Business Group will be hosting a networking event at Pal Joey's. So, on the 12th, if you don't get up early for the networking, you can make it to the night one. On September 13th at 11:30 a.m., we have a luncheon learn on the cost of conflict in the workplace, and that also will be hosted at Pal Joey's. On September 14th at 5:00 p.m., we have Wild Things Pet Service ribbon cutting. September 15th at 6:00 p.m., the Bulldogs Unleashed auction that was just presented to you earlier this evening. September 19th, the Alpha POS ribbon cutting at noon. On September 20th, we have the Fox Valley Luncheon and Expo at St. Andrews Golf Course. And the keynote speaker will be the President of Fona International, Joe Slawek, S-L-A-W-E-K. And September 21st, if you or anyone that you know that has a business that is interested in learning more about the benefits of Chamber membership, we are hosting our Eggs Benefit at Water Street Studios. Then I would like to announce to you all, if you haven't read, you haven't gotten to your newsletter yet from this morning, to save the date for our annual harvest celebration, where we'll be honoring our Donna Delasassi Award recipient this year on October 3rd at Marmion's Abbey Farms. And this year's recipient is Jamie Sam from Batavia Main Street. So, we're very excited to add her to the list of those honorees and hope that you all can join us that evening. I'll say a little joke now. So, the, I just want to give a warning to the Chamber of Commerce that is down in South Carolina, I guess, that the "Who Let the Dolphins Out" doesn't sound quite as well. So, just throw that in there. But without further ado, I have this evening joining me, Casey Hoag, which is the owner of Six Plus Cypress. And you can thank her for either the outfits that you've been wearing around town lately or the new koozies that she just dropped off you. So, please welcome Casey.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Thanks, Holly, for inviting me tonight to speak a little bit about the business. I'm kind of going to go off the Chamber sheet here, because I have a lot to say and I can talk a lot, so it's just going to keep me minimized. My name is Casey. As Holly said, our business name is Six Plus Cypress. I'm actually co-owner. We were founded originally two years ago in the St. Louis area. It was my neighbor and myself who both wanted to do something a little more for our families and still wanted to stay home. The six in our name comes, we have six kids between us, I have four, she has two, and we met on Cypress Meadows Drive, so that's where the Cypress comes from. And at that point, we started out just as a little social media business and thinking, you know, Facebook, selling on Instagram, and it blew up, a lot bigger than we ever anticipated. We were just two real women trying to help everyday women feel fun, affordable, fashion-y when they're going out for drinks on the town, date night, whatever it may be. My husband was then relocated here in November. So, what do we do with the business? Okay, I'll take the online. We have two little shops in St. Louis. We had known, my family knew, that we wanted to live in the Fox Valley area. Fell in love with our house, which is actually in Mill Creek, but we are in Batavia schools, libraries, and everything. So, I kept driving by this little place, it had these great windows, and I thought to myself, oh, mannequins would look so good there, mannequins would look so good there. And I honestly was looking for new places to shop myself sometimes, and would, I wanted something closer. Not that Geneva's far away, not that St. Charles is far away, but it's more of a destination. I felt like I had to kind of make it an all-day affair, get the stroller for the kids, do this kind of stuff. And I was like, gosh, Batavia doesn't have anything that I could actually offer. My stuff would look good here. And I kept driving by those windows. Finally, just called the landlord and said, "I just want to meet," pretty much signed the lease that day. And Batavia has been phenomenal to us. I couldn't be more overwhelmed, to be quite honest. It's taken off way faster than projected, returning inventory way faster than projected. I am soon going to be looking for new space in Batavia somewhere, probably within the next year and a half, because we're growing at such a rapid pace, if given all sales and things still stay the same. So, you know, my number one reason for Batavia was it just doesn't have anything, and the feedback from the customers coming in was, "This is fantastic. I don't have to park and then walk. I can park in front of your store, I can get what I need, I can get out." It's kind of a quick and easy, we've quickly become a gifty-type place. A lot of people coming in looking for gifts for a girlfriend's birthday or a dinner party that night. I can sign with some local other women businesses on homemade earrings and signs and things, so you can come in and get a gift for, like I said, a birthday party, a housewarming or something, and then pick up an outfit for that date night or that night out, that party, whatever, at the same time. And we really thrive on offering affordable fashion. You can most likely get three items from my store, from maybe one item at another store, at another city over, that would be a little bit more costly, because they have a lot more competition, maybe rent's a little higher. So, we're feeling very welcome and fantastic here. So, that's kind of it. We have a ribbon cutting on Friday and hope to see you all there, so.
You want to tell, you're on TV now, so you want to tell everybody your address, exact...
Oh, yeah, sure, sorry.
And phone number and your email.
So, I'm just going to, you're going to laugh. My phone number, I don't know, because I don't memorize phone numbers, but it's on the business card, which is in your koozie. We're at 239 West Wilson, and you can find us at sixplucypress.com, and that's S-I-X-P-L-U-S-C-Y-P-R-E-S-S.com. And so, we're right on the corner, Special Occasions, the Photography Studio, ourselves, and then Lisa's Heads or Nails Salon. So, we're right on that little, I guess we're calling it now kind of like our women's role that Mary and I were like, oh, and dress and hair, we can get it done, so.
A little history lesson for you. You're underneath what used to be Mary Anderson's dress shop. I don't know if you've ever heard that. She was there for many, many years when Alderman Brown and I were kids in this town, and that goes back into the 1950s. She was kind of the, it was upstairs where Mary Marconi now has the other, but a little sidebar to it, right next door where Mrs. Dazo has the photography shop, that was a barber's shop in there for a number of years. And one of the barbers in there was a guy by the name of Jim Mayer, and he ends up being the father of his daughter, Sherry, who became quite famous and changed her name to Jackie DeShannon. And Jackie DeShannon wrote, "Put a little love in your heart, and what the world needs now is love." And she won the Grammy Award in 1983, and she was the opening act for the Beatles' first tour of America in 1964. And so, this is, this is like right next door where you are.
The history, you should hear the stories that even people come in and they're like, "This used to be." And it's just like, I just sit there and I listen, and it's crazy. And we have this great brick-exposed wall that just always just screams history. And, I mean, the walls are thin, so you can hear the foot, so, I mean, it's just, it's kind of, they're like, "What's all happening?" I'm like, "Oh, there's so much happening in this building. It's fantastic." Yeah, we love it.
I tell Mr. Marconi that we ought to put the little, gather some little tabloid that he can mount on the outside of the building, so people could go by there and read everything that...
Has been in there. He gave me quite a history lesson on all of it, and the whole kind of corner right where I'm at, so.
And if you ever, you want to get into bigger history, you can go right next door to the Methodist Church, which between 1915 and 1918, there was a minister in there by the name of Reverend Fay Arnold Moon. And Reverend Moon was here for three years, he had his kids in the Batavia school system, and he left Batavia to become a chaplain in World War I, and he never returned to Batavia. But in 1969, when the United States of America landed on the moon, we found out that Reverend Moon was the grandfather of Buzz Aldrin, who was one of the two U.S. astronauts to land on the moon.
That's awesome.
So, you've got, you've got some pretty interesting history surrounding you up there.
It is a, we love the location. I couldn't be happier with the location. And the only downfall is that we're kind of on that site, so signage is kind of hard to read sometimes. But Mr. Marconi put up new awning for me, so I was happy with that, so my address can be at least visible from the street now.
Well, we're very pleased to have you as a business in town, and we love your attitude and the nice things I've heard people say about you, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, yeah, we're loving it.
Razzle-dazzle on the quality and professionalism that you've brought to the Batavia business community on Wilson Street. So, thank you for helping us become a shining star there.
So, we're hoping to get more right along there, just a little, a couple more. I don't want much retail competition, but I'll take others out. But thank you very much. We'll see some of you on Friday. Thank you.
All right, moving to eight, where we've taken that off the agenda, so we'll move to nine, which is Resolution 18-101-R, authorizing a contract with I...
Low-Income Housing Energy Assistance Program?
That's it, thank you.
Okay.
Who's got this one?
I do.
Alderman...
Okay, yes, so this is a nice program. There's a local agency that works with the State of Illinois Low-Income Housing Energy Assistance Program. And this is a three-year contract between the Batavia and this agency, which the agency offers assistance to utility customers that qualify from a low-income perspective, and they can get assistance with their utilities. So, can you, how long have we been doing this?
I'm not sure, let's see.
But we have been doing it, and the billing department, people can contact the utility department and the billing department and get information as to where they can apply for assistance. Are there any questions?
Make a motion for the approval of the resolution.
So, I move that we approve Resolution 18-101-R, authorizing a contract with the community contacts, local agency for the Low-Income Housing Energy Assistance Program.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Atak, second ball, and Metzler for the approval of Resolution 18-101-R. Any discussion? Kirk, please call the roll.
Atak?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Metzler?
Way has worked with the Batavia Public Schools and Kane County to bring online a service that's called 211. And so, I just briefly wanted to explain that 211 is a resource people, beginning November 1st, will be able to just dial those three numbers to get a connection to services when they are in need. When they are in need of clothing, when they are in need of food, when they are in need of medical services, when they are just in need. And they will be able to be connected with hundreds of resources that are available within our community. Sometimes it's hard to know exactly where to go for the type of help that you need, and the idea behind this is to bring all of those services into one central place where what happens with the person who's answering the phone at 211 is they're going to have a path to connect you to the service that already exists to help you. So, it isn't a replacement for those services, it's getting you in contact with the services that you need. And in October, United Way is going to be here to talk to all of you about those services and how they've been able to bring those to our community. I think they're going to be very valuable services to us. There is no Plan Commission meeting for tomorrow. Staff and community development continue to work on the Windmill Landings Project, which is the other senior living facility, which will be located across the street from what the project that was just completed. We have also continued to work with Metronet is continuing their installations. We recently approved three underground permits and three overhead permits for them to continue installing their infrastructure, and very soon, they expect to be bringing people online. Permit comments have also been issued for some of our larger projects, such as the second phase of the expansion of Funway, 1100 North Red Ant, which is a new building, and then also the improvements that the Park District is making to the East Side Center. In Public Works, we have begun our annual roadway resurfacing project. We are substantially complete on the Area 3 stormwater improvements, and we expect that that project will be pretty much completed in the month of September, and also doing final asphalt surface on the intersection of Morton Street and Batavia Avenue. And that's all I have today, unless somebody has any questions about particular projects.
Any questions? Alderman Cullen?
The, when you're talking about signs and things coming down, there was some movement on cements and the fence posts and all that have just kind of stopped.
I heard that they came down today. Was that?
That's what I heard also.
Yes.
The last couple of posts.
About half of them were down last Friday. They were pulling them into a pickup truck, somebody was scrapping them, I think, as it was.
That has been an agonizingly slow process.
And the successful speed sign slowdown campaign, are we going to get those signs back from up in Geneva at Hillford ours?
I see Stephanie on Friday, I'll ask her.
Just stealing more of our good ideas.
I'm up for the road trip if you are.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Sure, thanks.
Committee reports. Alderman Brown, anything?
No, no report, Your Honor. As Laura said, Plan Commission meeting for Wednesday has been canceled. Historic preservation is scheduled for this coming Monday, September 10th at 5:30, and then the next Cal meeting will be September 11th at 7:00. And there's a few items on the agenda that I'm sure someone else will want to talk about a little bit, so I have.
Okay, Government Services, Alderman Atack?
There's no report tonight.
City Services, Alderman Wolf?
I believe that all three of the major items that are on the agenda for the September 11th Cal meeting are to do with the Deer Path and Main Street intersection improvement, so those will all be City Services. So, a lot to talk about.
Public Utilities, Alderman O'Brien?
Looks like, Your Honor, September 11th, there'll be just a discussion for communication regarding power allergies.
Okay. All right, other business, I'm ready to consult, anything else I wish to bring up? Alderman Chantet?
Just a couple of calendar items. One, this is two weeks from tomorrow, 10:00 a.m., Wednesday, September 19th. Elliot was so kind as to organize a meet-your-alderman event for us at the Holmstad. We were there last October, and about 75 residents had questions for us. I believe they wanted to know all about the campaigna project.
There were quite a few questions.
And I'm certain that they'll have a lot of questions about referendum issues, and we'll be there to answer questions for them. Another calendar item event, this is a week from this Thursday. This is September 13th from 6:00 until 7:00. This is the Unitarian Church in Geneva. If you'll remember, the organization Youth Outlook, we gave them a proclamation. It's the organization that provides resources and suicide prevention programs for LGBTQ youth. We did a proclamation back in May. Since then, St. Charles and Geneva adopted our proclamation verbatim. They're going to be doing a one-hour presentation, a mission tour on September 13th. I was asked to speak to introduce the executive director as a sort of a thank you for helping give them some recent momentum. Fifty people attended this last mission tour. I did kind of stack the deck, I made some phone calls. So, a state rep, Steve Anderson, was there, Mayor Burns was there, some county board members showed up, as well as representatives from the County Judicial Center, as well as the state's Attorney's Office, as well as a host of a lot of mental health professionals. It is a very worthwhile presentation, will bring tears to your eyes, and it's a great opportunity for us. So, again, if anyone can make it, from 6:00 until 7:00, that's a week from Thursday. That's all. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, quickly on the mayor's report, I've got two things I'd like to just talk about for a minute. As most of you know, every summer fall timeframe, we have Batavia High School class reunions. And for whatever reason, the last few years, they've become very popular and seemingly, for whatever reason, I get invited to come and chat with them. So, I'm going through that right now with the various class reunions that are taking place. And I just want to share with you that, once again, everybody is quite complimentary about what Batavia's done to itself, specifically how nice the downtown looks compared to what it looked like 30, 40, 50, 60 years ago when they graduated from Batavia High School and left and went wherever they went. And many of these people come back here, and they haven't been here in 40 or 50 years. And they are just like, it's unbelievable, you know? And the common thing I keep hearing, basically the statement is, well, I lived here, that downtown was like a dump down there, and now you've made it into like a park and a garden, and you've got all these people using it and whatever. So, I have the opportunity, as most of you do, the last few weeks, we've had a lot of downtown events take place, as recent as Sunday night with the party in the park or block party that we had and the car show, and I was here wandering around and having a lot of people talk to me and a lot of questions and a lot of comments. But again, Sunday night, there was specifically a lot of focus on how, now what you have to appreciate is we had, all this crowd went over to the car show, and then they came back for the food over here and the music and the dancing and whatever. But when they went over there and they looked back over here, highly complimentary about what they saw when they looked back to the west from the east side, that how nice the river, specifically how nice the river looked and how the park looks right next to the City Hall, and how the City Hall's building looks so nice now with the new windows, very complimentary about the look of the river. So, all of our conversations we've had the last couple of years, and specifically the last few months, about the river, I think are really paying some great positive benefits of appreciation for Batavia and helping us to kind of hold our head very high and be very proud of what we are doing. So, I just wanted to share with you that that's not going unnoticed, and a lot of people are making comments about it. The one thing I would like to share with you is, is that I've talked with Scott Muning several times, and I've talked with Attorney Drundo and his staff. I'm thinking I'm going to propose to you, and we've done this before, and I know some of you kind of cringe when I start talking about this, but I'm thinking that we really need to maybe kind of fine-tune some of our building maintenance laws that we have in Batavia. And I say this because I want to share with you a couple of experiences we've had. We've had, there are, the first thing you have to appreciate is if you go out and drive in any neighborhood, any place in town now, if you were here, again, if you were here 30, 40 years ago, you drove down some of these streets and it wasn't as good-looking as it is right now. Certainly, this rehabbing of all the old houses is really turning the appearance of a lot of the older houses around as they're getting refurbished and put back into higher use, and a lot of people are moving in, buying those houses. And so, you know, the old neighborhoods are really starting to look real good. So, if you get a house in those areas that's not following that trend, they start sticking out like the proverbial sore thumb. And so, we got a couple of these. Now, we've had a couple of experiences, and I just want to share with you what they were because Scott and I and Kevin and Roman and others are working on maybe some just adaptive language in some of the ordinances. We had a situation, I won't say where it was in town, where we had some trucks parked in a yard. So, our building department goes up to this house and starts asking questions about what's going on, why are these trucks here? And the owner says to us, well, I was renting space in my yard for these trucks to park, and people were living in these trucks. And this one guy, now you, the city, have come up here and told me that I can't have this here anymore, so blah, blah, blah. But there's a couple of these guys that didn't pay me my rent, and they owed me $40 a week for parking their car in my yard so they could sleep back there and hang out and whatever have you, and they haven't paid my rent, so I put chains or something on their axles so they can't get out of here. Now, one has to ask oneself, you know, where does this guy come from that he's renting space in his yard and charging money for it, and then he locks up the car? I mean, he's totally operating outside of our ordinances, ladies and gentlemen. So, I'm thinking that we're going to come back to you with some conversation about some language in the ordinance that's going to deal with vehicles being parked in the yard for some other purpose other than for just commuting around town, that we're not making living arrangements in vehicles in this town. It's unagreeable in my mind that we allow this to take place. Then we've got a couple of trailers or motorhomes sitting in yards that don't seem to move. And I've got some of the neighbors whispering in my ear, because when you're the mayor, you get the calls or the emails, about what's going on in that camper trailer that's parked out here in the back, by my neighbor's backyard. So, we're still looking at that, but we're going to probably have to come back with some language to you about moving camper trailers or whatever, living devices or whatever. We got another situation, we've not been able to prove, there's a treehouse in Batavia in a yard, and we got some people suggesting that some of these folks that are staying in the cars or whatever have you, if it's a nice night, they, when everybody turns out the light in the house where the treehouse is, they climb up the ladder and go in the treehouse and sleep there all night. So, I mean, it's just some real strange stuff that I think I just want to alert you to what's going on, and we may see some language that we're going to suggest that we do something to kind of rein in this a little bit and send a message that you can't go into Batavia, park a car or truck in the backyard, and then pay rent to live back in the backyard in somebody's backyard. I mean, that's just, that's far-fetched, but it's happening here. And Scott and I can both tell you names and addresses of, or two, of where this is happening. And so, we're on top of it, and we're trying to do something about it. The other thing I want to share is kind of a fun thing, is you, most of you know, Chief Dyke came to us a few weeks ago and said he wanted to sell the old fire department rescue truck. Now, Eszter's had it, it's a 1955 vehicle, so it's 73 years of age this year, and it's parked out behind the West Side Station. And this is a picture of what it originally looked like. And so, we've had people come in and say, what did this used to look like? So, I've prepared a, I had these couple of pictures blown up, and I've given one, I gave one the other night to the West Side Fire Station where it's at, and I got this one to give the Chief Dyke tonight for the East Side Station because people are coming in wanting to know about this vehicle. So, it's interesting, this vehicle was donated to the community of Batavia, and on the side of it, it's written here, donated by Batavians through the Chamber of Commerce. It's right here on the side of the vehicle. And then they had a one-night fund drive in 1954, I believe it was, and people went door to door, and they raised about $2,800 through donations that people donated, and they bought the truck with the $2,800, and then some foundations, the Rotary, and I believe Furnace Electric, and some other people made some other donations, so they were able to buy the equipment that they put in the truck. So, what's interesting to me about this is I now have been talked, I've talked to two or three people who tell me they are going to buy this truck, whatever the price may be. So, the chief set it up, now we're going to do this, have we started the auction yet? Can you put your bid in for it yet?
No.
We're going to do it, though, so you can put a bid in, and then you can raise your bid, isn't that what we're doing? Do you want to explain this?
Yeah, I'll turn this on and turn it on. The, we're waiting for the title from the stage. We could never find a title here, and so, I finally found the right vehicle code in order to get a new title. So, in about two weeks, it'll go on an auction site, and I got probably about 15 or 20 names of people who want me to send their, send me the information on how to bid on it. So, it's not just from Batavia, it's from, I have places from the east coast to Iowa to all.
Yeah, I've gotten those calls. So, is the bidding going to be that if I bid $2,000 and then somebody bids $2,200, I can go back on and say, I'm going to bid $2,500?
That's right.
And you'll be, everybody will be able to see whose bid and what the bid amount is, right?
That's correct.
Up to the final moment?
Yep.
Okay. So, just to show you how Batavia history kind of goes around and comes around, when this thing was, this truck was first bid or built and put out in service in 1955, they customized the inside of it. And lo and behold, we had a fire chief at the time in Batavia who was our chief for 26 years, his name was Bud Richter, and he was the first paid fire chief as far as he had three firemen working for him, one each day, and they worked three days, every third day. So, Bud Richter had a lot of innovative ideas, and so, he came up with the idea of this small rescue truck. And so, he did it, and we had Batavia Body Company, which was right across the parking lot here where the Creamery was, and they built truck bodies. And so, he took this truck down to Batavia Body Company a couple of times, and they fabricated them, benches and compartments and whatever have you. And so, he got it all set up using his own design, and he wrote some articles about it, and suddenly, he was getting all kinds of inquiries from fire chiefs all over the United States about how he put this together and how it was fabricated and how was it laid out. So, at the time, we had a photographer in town by the name of Glenn Haynes, and Glenn Haynes was the grandfather of Scott Haynes, who was now our street superintendent. And Glenn's been dead for many years, but he was an alderman from the second ward and was on the city council for a number of years. But anyway, Glenn Haynes went to the fire department, and he took a picture of the back of the truck. And so, digging deep into my files, which most of you know I have, I was able to locate Glenn Haynes's original picture. And so, here's what the inside of the truck looked like. And so, I just had today that picture copied, and so, I'm going to give this to both stations now. So, we have a picture of what the outside of it looked like, and then we have the picture of what it looked inside the truck. And so he did it, and, and we had Batavia Body Company, which was right across the parking lot here, where the Creamery was, and they built truck bodies. And so he took this truck down to Batavia Body Company a couple of times, and they fabricated them, benches and compartments and, and whatever have you, and so he got it all set up using his own design, and, and he wrote some articles about it, and suddenly he was getting all kinds of inquiries from fire chiefs all over the United States about how he put this together, and how it was fabricated, and how was it laid out. So at the time, we had a photographer in town by the name of Glenn Haynes, and Glenn Haynes was the grandfather of Scott Haynes, who was now our street superintendent, and Glenn's been dead for many years, but he was an alderman from the second ward and was on the city council for a number of years. But anyway, Glenn Haynes went to the fire department, and he took a picture of the back of the truck. And so digging deep into my files, which most of you know I have, I was able to locate Glenn Haynes's original picture. And so here's what the inside of the truck looked like, and so I just had the day, that picture copied, and so I'm going to give this to both stations now, so we have a picture of what the outside of it looked like, and then we have the picture of what it looked inside the truck, and it's got the resuscitator box and the generator and the first aid kit and the tool kit and all the stuff, the, the extra pair of boots. And interestingly, Chief Richter was a total fireman at all times, and so one of the things he had Batavia Body Company do was they went and underneath the trunk, the truck, they had him install a little pump system, and he's got a 75-foot-long garden hose that's out, comes off the back of the truck, so if he got to a car accident or something, and there was, the car was on fire and the fire, he didn't have one, only one guy with him, they didn't have a lot of help, so they had one vehicle. So he said he had 75 gallons of water in this tank that Batavia Body put underneath this Chevy truck, and it, you can even see the little handle here where he turned it, and he could get the water going to put, fight the fire if he had a fire on this thing. So I just think that's kind of cute history for Batavia, and I'm very pleased we got all this interest of who it is, but we've now have the photographs of both the inside and the outside to, to share with all our prospective bidders. So if anybody wants, I'll leave it up here on the desk, so if anybody wants to look at the, the picture, it's here, but they'll be out at the fire stations on both the east and west sides if anybody wants to do it. This past weekend, I was told, several people called me and said they were out there looking at the truck, and when Esther got it, they repainted it and re-lettered it and redid a lot of stuff to it. So everybody wants to know what it looked like originally, so that's why I got the picture. But I had several people tell me they were going out to the fire station over the weekend, so I took a, I just took this picture out on Friday to the fire department in the west side, and they've been, they had it in a little folder out there, and they were showing it to people as they would come in, but now we got the inside picture to go along with it. So we're fully prepared to sell this truck to the highest bidder, but.
It's going to be interesting.
Yeah.
See that go. I, I had a conversation with former director of, Jeff Glazer about that, about when they took the pump off of it and the tank out of it and other things that they removed, but they did leave, I guess at that time was a very custom-designed bumper, that's, that's where the hose was wound up inside.
Right, right.
Inside of the bumper.
And he had Batavia Body, it's, it's tread plate, and he had Batavia Body Company fabricate that and move it, and it's funny, if you look here, you can see the hose is just wide enough to come out this hole, and he had, he figured out how much room he had to kind of roll the thing, push the thing in there and get it all in. He could only get 75 feet in there with, if he went any bigger, he got into problems and the hose wouldn't fit anymore. So, and then the resuscitator was always in this box, and I'm old enough that I can remember when I was on the fire department as a volunteer and I was working, this was the resuscitator in the old days, which is the oxygen tank that you ran in and put the mask on people and gave them oxygen. And I see today, you know, we come in with the paramedics and the boxes and the monitors, we are so far more advanced today than we were, but this, at the time when we did this, this was state-of-the-art in Batavia, you know, I think Richter could probably take credit that a few people's lives were saved because we had this vehicle. So this is good history, I mean, this is a nice story about our town and shows how things were done, and not, a lot of money wasn't spent on any of this, and we did a lot of it ourselves using our own craftsmen, and we were fortunate to have the Body Company right there, and they, the Body Company did build one fire engine, we didn't have it, it was owned by West Chicago. I have pictures of that, but there was a fire engine made at the Batavia Body Company at one time, only one was ever made there. So, no other business, Alderman Brown, I entertain a motion for adjournment.